We're going to get started with the agenda review session. All right, first of all, we have ordinances on second reading. Orders number 011601. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 10 dash 16 Stopping and Standing or Parking. Add subsection 16 dash 26 dash 260 Car Share Vehicles and Parking. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 10 dash 20 Handicap Parking. Section 10 dash 20 dash 010. Schedule 39 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons. Adding 3. 97 Trup Avenue, 62 Richardson Street, 184 Fulton Street. We have item 011603. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic. Schedule 8A Loading Zones. Reference Prospect Street. Ordinance number 011604. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic. Schedule 38 Time Limited Parking Areas. Hamilton Streets. Okay, we have no ordinances on first reading. Then we go to the resolutions. Resolution number 11634. Approve the agenda amendments. Resolution 11, R11635. Approve payroll. R-11636. Authorize the refund for redeemed tax sale certificates. R-11637. A memorial resolution for Aldrich Al Cooper Jr. R-11638. Approve request for city property requested by Globe Med at Rutgers University location, Dugald Park Field Number 2 next to the baseball diamond for flag football tournament to support Change of Life Uganda Calliope. Dates Sunday, November 20, 2016. Time from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. R-111639. Authorize the purchase by police department under state contract. Landigan Associates for 4 bulletproof vests for the police department. Not to exceed $3,025. R-11640. Improve the payment for emergency procurement for water utility. For repair of a sewer line at Seaman Street in Joyce Kilmer Avenue with Nathan Contractors Corporation. Not to exceed $5,300. Purchase order number D92313. R-11641. Improve the amendment of the resolution. R-01652. Reason to pay additional legal fees in amount of $3,575 to Arleo and Donahue LLC representing Mayor James Cahill in matter of Steve Middleton versus the city of New Brunswick and Arthur Anderson at all in the city of New Brunswick on punitive damages. Claims from $14,200 to $17,775. R-111642. Approve and award a contract with Sal Electric Company Incorporated. Electric service for the Department of Public Works not to exceed $11,240. The Middlesex County Cooperative Purchasing Program. CK Middlesex from Sal Electrical Incorporated. R-11643. Authorize the purchase by police department under state contract from Safety League Incorporated doing business as Atlantic Topical for purchase of ammunition. Not to exceed $20,938 to $31.68. R-11644. Approve and award a contract with Maximum Quality Foods Incorporated for furnished and delivered products for the senior citizen tower center. Term 12-month period commencing November 19, 2016, ending November 18, 2017. Specification number 56316P. R-11645. Approve authorization to advertise for water utility distribution of garage roof repairs for specification number 57216W. All right, R-11646. Approve amendment resolution R-101573. Reason to pay coffee overcharges in amount of $171.88 for the fire department's digital copper with GE Capital Information Tech Solutions doing business as Rico USA Incorporated. Not to exceed $171.88. Approval of this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. R-11647. Approve the amendment of resolution R-071612. The final bill. Reason to pay the final legal fees in amount of $1,897 to Mixner and Mixner for police officer Brad Burdell in matter of Barry Deloche et al. versus Officer Brad Burdell from $38,369.15 to $40,866.15. R-11648. Authorize tax collector to transfer credits on several tax and utility accounts. R-11649. Approve award a contract with Clean Air Company for proprietary maintenance and repairs contract for the platinum system. Diesel exhaust system at all three firehouses. Term 12-month period commencing December 4, 2016, and ending December 3, 2017. Not to exceed $10,000. R-11650. Approve the amendment resolution is 051850. Change order number 2 with Rock Solid Construction for Chalmers Street Water and Sewer Main relocation. Specification number 869-14. Amount of $70,902.95. Approval of this change will not, will, excuse me, will constitute, thank you. Will constitute an increase in 20% or more of the original contract. R-111651. Approve the amendment of resolution R-101624. The reason additional dates to perform work. Approve the relaxation of noise ordinance requested by Lucero and Mendez Construction LLC. The reason replacement of a significant area concrete sidewalk in front of 25 Perpatrick Street. Dates Saturday, November 19, 2016, and December 3, 2016. 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Approve the amendment of resolution to pay additional legal fees in amount of $2,286 to Mixner and Mixner for police officer Andrew Weiss in matter of Rodriguez et al. versus police officer Andrew Weiss from $30,814.55 to $33,141.45. Resolution authorizing budget transfers. 2016 municipal budget. R-11654. Approve resolution consolidating the shared services with the New Brunswick Board of Education for the 2016-17 school year for the reimbursement of school safety program, the after-school program, and sister cities programs and the use of various city parks and garbage and trash removal and maintenance costs. The amount of 3... Hold on, 3 million? 3 million? I'm hesitating. R-11655. Rescind the resolutions. R-018154 and 061645 as to liquor license number 1214. 33014. All these numbers look the same. For JSM Investments at New Brunswick LLC. All right, then we have items for discussion by council, public discussion, and then we'll move on with the program. Do we have anything else?
That's all.
Okay, that's all. All right. Bring the meeting to order.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garladi?
Present.
Council President Egan is absent.
All right, please be advised that the notice of requirements of the open public meeting app has been complied and satisfied, and that the annual notice which has given sufficient notice of the time and place and contact of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been fulfilled by the city clerk and has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. New Brunswick, New Jersey has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're just going to stand for a moment of silence for our nation and for those that are defending freedom around the world, those that continue to defend freedom, and those that have given their lives in the cause of freedom. All right. Okay. Move the minutes. All right. Okay, I want to motion to move the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
All right, we don't have any public hearings today, so now we got ordinances on second reading. We had the ordinance of 011.
Would it be possible to do this resolution?
Whatever the council's pledges, if you'd like to jump to the resolutions, I know we have a resolution.
We have a special, yes, we have a special resolution that we wanted to present first due to the magnitude of this, and we're going to ask that, do we have to approve it first?
No, you asked me to read it first.
Okay, we're going to ask that. City attorney, please read the resolution and then we'll...
Resolution R-11637. By the municipal council. Whereas Aldrich D. Al Cooper Jr. passed away on September 21, 2016. And whereas Al Cooper was a native of New Brunswick and a graduate of New Brunswick High School and the University of Connecticut, at both of which he was a star basketball player. And whereas Al Cooper had a distinguished career in business working at Continental Insurance Company, New Jersey Belt Telephone Company, Triangle Conduit and Cable Company, and subsequently at Johnson &amp; Johnson International. And whereas in 1967, Al Cooper was elected along with four others to challenge the incumbent political structure of the city of New Brunswick. And the entire ticket, known as the New Five, was elected in May 1967, changing the political mood and civic outlook of the city. And whereas in 1975, the residents of the city voted to change the city's form of government from commission to mayor council. And Al Cooper was reelected, this time as a councilman, and was chosen by his council colleagues as council president. And whereas Al Cooper was a progressive leader for change in the city and was a driving force for the beginning of the city's revitalization, which has continued to the present day. And whereas in 1974, then-mayor Patricia Sheehan was appointed by Governor Brendan T. Byrne to be the state commissioner of the community of affairs. And Al Cooper was chosen by his council colleagues to be the acting mayor of the city of New Brunswick, the first African-American to hold that office. And whereas as mayor, Al Cooper continued to display the same progressive leadership he had demonstrated as commissioner, councilman, and council president in his prior offices, earning nomination as mayor for the election of 1974. And whereas despite his outstanding record of service to the city and its residents, in the November 1974 election, Al Cooper was not elected as mayor, and his running mates also lost, the election being widely viewed as a rerun for the old five and its adherents who had been defeated in 1967. And whereas Al Cooper continued his distinguished civics and business career upon returning to a full-time business career with Johnson &amp; Johnson until his retirement as vice president of corporate affairs. And whereas Al Cooper rightfully earned the appreciation and respect of the city and its residents during his political career and thereafter. And whereas Al Cooper is survived by his devoted wife Judy, by his children Aldrich B., Buzzie, and Jill, along with his grandchildren. Now therefore, be it resolved by the New Brunswick City Council that the members of council express their profound appreciation and thanks for the life and service of Al Cooper, their heartfelt sympathy to Al's wife and children and grandchildren, and their hope that the life and service of this remarkable man will be forever remembered in the annals of the city of New Brunswick. And be it further resolved that certified copies of this resolution shall be sent by the city clerk to Judith Cooper. Adopted November 16, 2016, if the council saw the adopt.
Yes, I move the...
Public.
Oh, that's a... Oh, I'm sorry. Does any member of the public like to speak on this? Then we'll take the minutes from the council. Any member from the public? The members from the council?
I would just like to say that I grew up with Mr. Cooper. And he was a friend and a mentor and an exemplar for all of us. And he is deeply missed and honored to move this resolution.
Second.
Um, can I? Real quick? Sure. Oh, um, as I was going to say, my first foray into politics, my father was, I was, I wanted to see how old I was, but I was little, pretty young. But I remember my father taking me around to all the awards during that election, and it was a little contentious at the time, you know, but that was my first time that I really had gotten involved, because he was showing me, my father was showing me how elections work and, you know, going out and handing out things and stuff like that. And I was a young kid at the time, I was really young at the time, but that was like one of my, that was my first foray into politics, and it's been an honor, it's been an honor definitely.
Yeah, I also say something. I didn't know Mr. Cooper, but I heard of him through the many stories from my close friend Judge Wright, who passed away in 2015. And I was honored to have known him only through the stories that Judge Wright told me. And I'd like to express my condolences, because I really would like to have known Mr. Cooper, because I heard that he was a great man. And so he will be missed by many around here. So I expect my condolences to you and to your family.
Oh, the motion's...
So moved. Second. So noted. Councilmember Anderson?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Motion is stopped.
Motion's...
You might want to tell Mrs. Cooper that a certified, you copy...
Yes.
...the city deal we're looking forward to.
There'll be a certified, we want to invite you, we want to invite Mrs. Cooper, we also have a former mayor, Patricia Sheehan Weir, and standing members.
Thank you. All right, we have ordinances on second reading. Order number 011601. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10 Stopping and Standing or Parking, and add subsection 1626 dash 260 Car Share Vehicles Parking. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none?
So, second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Then we have ordinance 011602. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10 dash 20 Handicap Parking, Section 10 dash 20, that's 010. Schedule 39 Parking Zone for Handicap Persons, adding 3. 97 Trup Avenue, 62 Richardson Street, 184 Fulton Streets. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this resolution, on this ordinance, excuse me? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
All right, now we have 011603. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 8A Loading Zones, Prospect Street. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this order? Uh, yeah, speak on this.
President?
Yes.
I'd just like to remind people that are here and others, loading zones are not for owner's cars, they're not for owner's vehicles. And I hope that the police department and the parking authority take a look, and when they see something, they're not on emergency call, so that these trucks are not double parking and causing some people to go around it and possibly get hurt or something like that. So just a reminder about these loading zones.
Move the ordinance? Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Right, now we have ordinance 011604. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Parking and Traffic, Schedule 38 Time Limited Parking Areas. Reference to Hamilton Street. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
All right, now we have resolutions. Resolution 011634, all the way to resolution... 01, uh, no, no, 11655. Would anybody from the public like to speak on any of these, any of these resolutions?
Uh, there's no more 188 Water Street. Only Adam, come up and comment on resolutions, but I do have a question for Charles Street with the water and sewer main. Can tell me, is that the situation of helping Joyce Kilmer with the flooding? 650?
650.
111650?
All right, anybody? Yes.
The Charles Street project is complete. This was a water main and sewer main construction project. And it is complete at this point, and this is the final payment to the contractor for that project.
So you're saying that the job is finished with Joyce Kilmer and Charles Street where it seems like, what, still having the same problem?
No, this is a project for an underground utility...
Maybe I've misunderstood.
Installation. This is not a surface project.
This is on the ground with the, that was with the sewer, to stop the sewer from mixing in with the water? How many could come?
The project was intended to move water and sewer pipes out from the mouth of the underground culvert that let storm water run underneath Charles and underneath Joyce Kilmer. And it became the mild run on the other side of Joyce Kilmer. This project was moving those pipes out of the, out of the storm sewer area so that there was less likelihood that debris would build up under the road and contribute to flooding in that area.
Well, actually, the same thing is still going on right there with Joyce Kilmer and Charles Street. Well, I'm starting to ask a question. Tell me, due to where Livingston Avenue was done, Jersey Avenue was all done, but what is it particularly why I think you done did three procedures there already, a lot of money, and what, nothing's being done the right way? For it to still continue going on?
I don't think that's for me to conclude.
Well, how does that do?
It wasn't going the right way, but I will say this. The county caused the culverts on Jersey, Livingston, Joyce Kilmer to be rebuilt. That was done, I have no reason to believe that was done in inferior, within the inferior workmanship. This project, as I told you, was to try and improve the ability for water to flow underneath Joyce Kilmer and through the new culvert. The mild run has buried in its bed sanitary pipe that runs all the way down to a meter chamber near landing lane. So the, I'm not qualified to speak about flooding, but I will say this. That location is a low spot in this city in terms of elevation, and it has a stream and a sanitary pipe running through it as well. I can't opine on whether or not the flooding will ever occur at that location or not, I'm not qualified to say that. Maybe Mr. Moody can speak to that, but I would say the city has no reason to believe that construction was done improperly.
I just have a question, and maybe I'm confusing the patient. But didn't at the previous meeting we discussed this, either the last meeting or the one before, and there was some question about the contractor that they didn't do what they were supposed to do?
Yes.
And we need a process of trying to figure that out. I don't know if it's the same location again, I might be mistaken, I just want to clarify that.
I'll let Mr. Moody speak to that. I think the wrong contractor was stated that evening.
Oh, okay.
I thought due to where, like you two said, I thought they said due to where the constructor, where they didn't do the job correctly, that where the city was resuing them to get the money back, due to where the job that they did wasn't completed the right way.
Is that Rensselaer Charlie?
Yes, that was not this project.
Okay.
This project was designed and completed in accordance with the plans and specifications.
Okay, so...
I think the project that has a dispute at the end of it is the Remsen Avenue Storm Sewer Project. That contractor's name was Cartrow. I know Miss Gage is involved in the complaints and the potential settlement of that, but I believe two meetings ago, the wrong contractor's name was used in conjunction with Charles Street.
Correct.
Will we still continue to monitor that, then, at least just with flooding that possibly exists there, see if there's any chances of doing anything if it does flip?
Okay, thank you. And then just one thing I wouldn't mention, where I'm not an engineer or anything, but due to where, how I do see things, where I realize, like I said, the other areas that have been done, like you, like you said, due to where that's much lower, what is it possible you can make the stream a little, little deeper to let the water flow out quicker so it won't be blocked right there? I'm not an engineer.
I will give you a non-engineering answer to that. I need to constantly tell you that I'm not an engineer, but there is a pipe buried in the bed of that stream. I don't think there's the ability to deepen the stream. There is a sanitary sewer pipe that runs in the bed of the stream, and I'm told those things were constructed back then in that fashion, because that's what gravity allowed to happen.
Is it because, or...
Gravity, you know, that's the low point, that's where water...
Right.
...tends to gather, and people then built piping systems in the bed of these streams because gravity made it move down to the meter chamber at landing lane, and then eventually on its way for treatment in Sirel.
Okay, thank you, I understand, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes, standing on 41.
So noted. Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
All right, now we're going to go to items for discussion by council.
Mr. Council Vice President, I submitted a proposed council schedule for 2017 in your agenda packet, which sets forth the units and times, dates of meeting times, only the times only next year. I understand that September meetings may want to make both those at 6:30. Other than that, is this acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll agenda, is that for adoption at your next regular meeting?
Yes.
Just for clarification, the December meeting, the last December meeting for 2016 has been changed to...
Thursday, not Friday afternoon. You adopted a resolution and amended the schedule for this year, two meetings ago, I believe it was. Because I note, you know, I noted that, I didn't think that it was the council's desire to lead on a holiday week at 5:30. So you all apparently agree on that.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, also, we have the Jews. New Brunswick has been, we have won the bronze medal from the league, yes, it's a bronze, you know, we're going to do better next time, when it's gold, like always tell us, you know, nobody remembers bronze and silver, she won. But this is good. But this is good, this is pretty good. We have bronze medal from the League of American Bicycleists. As we're designated, as Mr. Patterson is going to explain to us a little bit more. Is that bicycle enthusiast who's gonna explain this a little bit further?
Um, thank you, Mr. Council President. Yeah, the city has been attempting to get this designation for the past couple of years. It is something that about 400 communities in the city and the nation have achieved over the last seven or eight years. And we put our application in this year. Gold Aspire, who usually runs the camera over here, put the application together for us, and we got it submitted, and we have achieved the bronze level status. And we get to have this nice sign. We'll get more of them additionally to put up around the city to show that we are a bicycle-friendly community. And we have gotten this because we have been very active in doing things like putting bike lanes on the streets, the bike corrals, which are the on-street, the bike parking, the daylighting of intersections to make it more visible for both pedestrians and cyclists, doing cyclovia. And also, New Brunswick was the first community in New Jersey, and I believe we're still only the second, to pass a, what's called a three-foot law that says people have to stay three feet away from cyclists when they're passing them with their cars on the street. So it's something we're really trying to do to make this a more bicycle-friendly city. We're the seventh community in New Jersey to reach this status. All the other, the other six also have just bronze status. We're the largest one. We're a little bit bigger than Hoboken, which is the next largest. And in our Big Ten Conference competitors, we're the 12th of the 14 towns to get this. So with our Big Ten competitors, we have some catching up to do. Several of them have silver and gold status, and Madison has platinum status. I believe it's one of only four communities in the country to achieve platinum status. So with our Big Ten competitor communities, we have a ways to go, but we're one of the leading communities here in New Jersey in doing this. So I think it's a big honor for the city to get this and shows we're really trying to lead the way in making this a better city for cyclists, pedestrians, as well as the drivers here, to make it a better city. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just before we move on to the public discussion, speaking of great city, trying to make it a great city. This past week ago, right, almost eight days ago, we had an election, and, you know, it turned out one way or the other. I know there's a lot of anxiety about how things are gonna change for different cities and different enforcements. Without going into the woods about everything, I just want to say that we will be doing our best to make the city with, one right call is a grand mosaic. We respect people regardless of ethnicities, sexual orientation, gender, background. Whatever you are, we will be welcomed and protected in this city. We're not a perfect city, are we a perfect city? No, but no city is perfect. But if we work together to respect one another and work together, we can become a grand mosaic and a better community towards one another. I'm just gonna leave that on that note. I want to open it up for any public discussion.
Daniel Moore, 188 Wofford Street. First, I will start off with to tell Lieutenant Trigg and his crew they did a wonderful job today on Livingston Avenue with the walkway, pedestrian walkway speeding. Tell them to keep up the good work stopping speeders around and not respecting walkers. But okay, getting back to my main speech tonight, that's where I would like to let the city know for who's haven't heard, while that our New Brunswick Raiders, Pop Warner, Junior Peewees, how I mentioned how we won the championship. Wow, this Sunday up towards Buffalo, New York, wow. How our boys, we won, we beat against a team that hasn't lost a game in over two years. How we beat them 13 to 0. How we'll be going on to the next regionals. But wow, that really feels good how our boys are really making it to a level. And then like I said, I understand that the city, Mr. Johnson, and we do help give breaks to Pop Warner Raiders, but I'm at times, due to where I give it to all of the coaches and the parents, few police officers, Mr. Weaver, his crew, firemen, where they're putting their heart into helping these kids. Like I said, I know it's easier for New Brunswick to do things with your help, but I still ask you, while for hard times, where I understand you said, due to where there's no tax ID, no permit, but like I said, no one really expected to be this far and glad to see that, like I said, we are. Is it possible that the city can make one permission to give the collect donations if they need to help out with the bus?
Mr. Council President investigated the situation at the meeting I just brought up, and we learned that the organization does in fact have the correct paperwork, but they haven't come to us recently and asked for permission to do any can. In the past, they have, and it's been granted. So if the organization wishes to do any kind of charitable solicitation, all they have to do is fill out the application, and I'm sure the council will approve it.
Yes, and also, I've seen, like I said, my son's playing in the league also, and I used to coach, and I have friends that coach. I know it's another Brick City Alliance, some of the things they're doing right now. They're doing both funding accounts, they're doing dinners. This always happens, this happens a lot of times when, at the end, because you don't budget in, just in case you don't make the playoffs, then all of a sudden you're looked at where they have to get the money. You know, you have to come up with a certain amount of money at a certain time soon. A lot of times, people will approach corporations, I don't know if they've done, you approach corporations, especially if they're in the city, you approach different entities on people who can fund it. You know, you even might even have played with people who used to play for the Raiders, you know, who may be able to fund that, you know, when you go towards those entities. Like I said, we can, we can, we can approve that, you know, once they bring the proper paperwork, and then we can get that moving.
Because like I said, it's not like where I was told that how the Salvation Army has to put theirs due to be approved. Okay, that's where they're out every week doing their donation, but like I said, this is basically at this situation, it's only a one-time thing if needed. Due to where, like I said, as far as making it all the way up to that level to go to Buffalo, and then that's this Sunday where you have another bus trip where the kids are going up to Buffalo, New York. But like I said, I know, I don't want to interact with whatever the Raiders has already, because I know, like I was told and they said, where you do, they do, the city does help them pretty much. But like I said, I was only asking just for this one time, due to where, like I said, where they have reached the level that, up higher than just regular donation. And that's the only reason why I was asking, like I said, not to cause anything or about where I look at Mr. Weaver and like I said, Mr. Johnson, where they're smiling at me. But yes, I do know, I don't want to cause any problem, like I said, due to where last week, what, $35 per child? This week, what, $30? $30? But like I said, a lot of them, the coaches put their heart in it to help allow with some of them. But like I said, I don't want any confusion with what's going on sometime. Maybe my speech is a little different than what I'm trying to say, but okay. My next one, that's where, with the traffic meeting that we had the first Thursday of this month, that was where I was talking about Lee Avenue. I'm like, wow, I really, I noticed how maybe the city should know how their workers really are. I know it was two people who was in the traffic meeting, and you have two people that's in the city council meeting. I see one of them is not here today, but wow, for you to really go against me the way you did. That was where, how, it was approved for a speed bump to be put on Comstock. How everyone, okay, approved it, no questions asked. And that was where I was mentioning to you about Lee Avenue, the switch speed bumps, due to where, like I said, you have a record of three accidents on Lee and Ward, three accidents on Lee and Lawrence, and then the last meeting, that was where I showed them the picture. That was for Lee and Ellen Street, where they had to cut the door off the, get the woman out. So that was where I said, wow, what is there a need for petition? Due to where if anyone, if you can recognize from Lee and Ward going up to Lee and Rutgers, you don't have any houses that are on Lee Avenue, those are all side houses. So then that's when I said, okay, that was where you agreed and said, okay, no problem. But then, due to where I had two of them to really speak up against me. Like I said, that's the other engineer, I'm not for sure, your partner, where he's not here. Oh, we just did the lines for the road, oh, we just got approved to do the curb there. What, are you really keeping calculating what I'm doing? Or are you really concerned about what I'm doing is to prevent, stop somebody from getting hurt? And like I said, for him to really say that, oh, yeah, we're gonna put these, the cones there, oh, we're gonna do this. Like I said, what is he really, like I said, I knew she was here. To really, what, is he really keeping count of what's going on? Did he really say that to me? Just because I said, wow, maybe it's time for speed bumps? And then, wow, I have another gentleman here from the lead meeting, due to where he was saying, oh my, due to where, like I said, you were ready to approve, then that's where you stepped up and said, oh my. I don't think that this would be good, it would hurt the fire trucks, the ambulance. And then I said, tell me, if that would hurt for that street, you can put them at the same level you have for Remson Avenue, the same level that you have for Joyce Kilmer Avenue. But why, when I'm saying for something, why are you speaking up like you're really coming against me for a reason? For what, that I do speak of things to be done?
So my, I know it was a matter of the traffic commission, but if you.
Sure. Ms. Moore really misconstrues what was said at that meeting. I don't think anyone on the commission, I think Mr. Cameron can back me up in what I'm saying, was opposed to what she was saying, calling for additional speed bumps. I've spoken out many times at the traffic commission in favor of speed bumps. Frankly, I'm one of the people who is a big proponent of them. However, there are concerns that are legitimate concerns that the fire department, DPW, and others have about putting in the speed bumps and how it affects their operations. The only comments that I've made to Ms. Moore is that we need to talk to the fire department and DPW to get their input about putting these there and how we can work around it. I've even suggested other types of styles of speed bumps that can accommodate fire trucks and garbage trucks and while slowing down the cars also. So I think she is completely misconstruing the comments that were made by myself and Mr. Valenti about speed bumps. No one is opposing slowing down the traffic on Lee Avenue or anywhere else in town. We all realize that is a major issue in this town, and as, just sort of saying to you before, we have been recognized as a bike-friendly city now. A lot of those improvements have made our streets safer and slower. We were also recognized last year as one of only five communities in the state for complete streets policies. How we were one of the leaders in the state in that area. We have been doing a lot in this area, and particularly in the second ward area, which is the first place where we put bike lanes, it's the first place we put the daylighting, and it is probably the area where we have the most speed bumps. It's an area where we understand there are problems, and we do try to address it. And Ms. Moore comes out and she brings these things to our attention, and we do try to address them. And I want to assure her that none of us are taking her comments and just ignoring them. We're all taking them into serious consideration, trying to implement things to improve the situation there. The only comments we make are that all the people involved have to have their input involved in the decision. We can't just unilaterally go put some of these facilities out there.
So would you please tell me, what would be the difference, like I said, with Remson Avenue, Remson Avenue, Joyce Kilmer Avenue? Okay, if you know that the fire trucks can flow over Remson Avenue and Joyce Kilmer Avenue, why just can't you put the speed bumps that's made the same way to be a certain way where the fire trucks can pass over? So just please explain to me, what would be the difference? What you're trying to say, where all you have to do, like it's what? The same type of speed bumps that you have on Remson Avenue? And same type of speed bump you have on Joyce Kilmer Avenue?
Ms. Moore, I think that what I'm hearing from Mr. Harrison is that they didn't say no. They said that they need to have their opinion, also the fire department, the police.
Yes.
Once that's done, so, you know, they haven't said no yet. It's just that they need their opinion and see what would, you have a point, you know, this sort of area. So let's see what they say. After they made that decision, then we could come back and see what was, if they say no, the reason why. They say yes, the reason why, but.
I understand what you're saying, but from here on out, due to where, what, he say, she say, what? Maybe it's time for the traffic meetings to be videoed also. Due to where, like I said, what, I am not gonna bring another person in, but like I said, due to where I know what was said to me. Sometimes I may change my speech, although I will agree with you on that, but due to far as, oh my, the other engineer, where he was saying, oh my, didn't we just do this? Didn't we just do that? Oh, we just did this for your corner. No matter how much you did, if it's not, if something needs to be done, it needs to be done. Like I said, what, you have a record of seven accidents, major accidents in that area, what, within the past six months? Yes, something has to be done. So like I said, it's not like I'm speaking up about, okay, do this, do this, do this. I'm speaking up for a reason, and I thank you all for looking into that. Like I said, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
To Mel Piven, 291 Senior Street in New Brunswick, New Jersey. I want, I guess, second what she stated about the Pop Warner, yeah, we are, you know, pretty proud of them, and they are doing a good job, and it's not a good look, you know. Our kids, the only ones that don't have buses to get back and forth to the game. But outside of that, they still, you know, continue to do good within the regular season and then within the playoffs. And I found at last meeting that you said the Scattaway is the only one who funds their organization. And I also found it is possible the city could give a grant. So are, is any workings in the makings as far as getting a grant or possibly funding the organization through the municipality?
Did the president or the vice president, have they asked, have they approached the city to ask for a grant? I mean, because it's like, sometimes it's not, I mean, sometimes the inner workers are, usually they would approach, you know, approach the city, and grant writing, writing, grant writing is pretty intense. You know, I mean, grant writing, especially when people set aside money, I know how grant writing works. You have to be specific, what you're gonna use the money for, designate it, and it's not overnight, it's not eternal.
So is any way outside of, could the city actually give a contribution to the organization?
That's the call of the policymakers in this town, which is you guys and the mayor. I don't know that anyone has asked. We have made contributions to 501(c)(3) corporations in the past. We've, I think we've given a grant to the cultural center in the past, if you recall, and we've contributed to the New Brunswick Sculpture Program. I don't think it could hurt to ask. We will, I think, ask for the 501(c)(3) documentation, which I talked to Mr. Weaver about, and it seems like it can be provided.
Also, I was, you know, I was kind of impressed. I want to know specifically, what was the proposal on behalf of Mr. Cooper in the city, or as far as, what is it there?
A resolution on memorializing his achievements in his lifetime here in New Brunswick.
I heard something, I didn't get to meet him either. Heard some good, you know, things about him. Heard you guys made heartfelt, you know, comments, and, you know, things sounded like he was a great guy. It was nice to see his wife and daughter here, and I'm actually kind of glad they left because I came to you guys two years ago. Every last one of you guys were sitting in that seat, and I asked you, why isn't the only black mayor that New Brunswick ever had picture isn't hanging out in that hallway? And it fell on deaf ears. But then you guys waited, passed away and threw all of this fall, when you could have gave him his flowers while he was living. Every last one of you was in those chairs, and I said, why, two years ago? See, I don't just do stuff for the moment, I do things because they're in my heart. But then when someone passed, it would have been beautiful for him to see this display of sincerity in these great comments while he was living. But I came here, and I said, why isn't that man's face in that hallway, a picture of him? And every last one of you guys were in that seat, and you heard me say it, and it fell on deaf ears. But when he passes, you let his wife and his kids, you bring them there and tell how great and how honorable the man was, but you didn't want to hang his picture in the hallway. I couldn't make this stuff up.
I think there is a measure.
I wish I could make this stuff up, I swear to. And I didn't want to be a joy killer because his wife and a black they left. And maybe if they had stayed, I wouldn't say what I'm saying now. But you know for a fact, I'm gonna repeat. have said what I'm saying now, but you know for a fact, I'm gonna repeat, all of that shenanigans, all the things you did, I asked you to put this man's pictures in the hallway, you denied it.
We didn't, I don't.
Yeah, but did it happen?
And we, and we had, I don't.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't, I don't think we denied it, I don't remember denying it, and like I said, the thing that we did tonight, I'm not gonna allow that to be jaded, and that was a good thing we did, and like I said, I have met him, and spoken to him over the years, and spoken to him over the years, and I don't remember what, what was the, I don't remember that meeting that night, I don't, I don't remember.
I don't know either, but I think every, every mayor, other than Mayor Kegel, has a picture of some sort in that hallway.
Every mayor does, right?
I believe that's true.
So why is it, you know, now do we have to go into the archive?
Danielle, are you looking at the picture right outside the door?
No, I love this picture.
I can go into the archives and dig up when I brought that.
No, I mean, it might be valid, but I feel like.
I think, you know, the larger pictures, I believe, are people who have passed away in office, and then the smaller pictures are every mayor.
There's the, there's the.
He's in the hallway?
Yes.
Where's he at?
Right here, in the collage picture.
He's in the collage picture?
Yes.
I think that's just, I think that's more, a little more than just being in collage, but this is why I say what I say, this is why I say what I say, because if you walk in this building as a black person, and you see a black person's face hanging up, that's inspiration, that's why we all got happy when Barack Obama was, we need inspiration, when we see a face like that, because for one, when I found out, I never knew, I've been a lifelong resident, I never knew we had a black mayor, and so a lot of people I'm sure never knew that New Brunswick had a black mayor, so that would want the picture if this picture hang up, not in the collage, and when did the collage go up? Because when I asked you that, you did, it wasn't there, maybe it just came, maybe it just came up, I don't know.
It's been for a very long time.
Y'all don't get it, all right.
No, it's been for, it's been for a very long time, first you said there was no picture, the picture has been out there, the picture has been, excuse, one second, the picture has been there, and it's not even about a collage, it's just like when we, when we have a conglomerate of the president's pictures, we don't put one in front, yes, each, each person is historical, actually, we've had two, we've had two for the record, two black mayors, two African-American mayors for the record, yes, so, and, and being, if we go back to the archives, I mean, inspiration, different people draw inspiration from different things, but from different ways, I mean, maybe, maybe some people will draw inspiration from a picture, but then you could draw inspiration from somebody's life, somebody could have been here tonight and heard the resolution and drew inspiration from that, you know, because we see a face sometimes, like you said, like, hmm, just because we put a face in some place, that's not always gonna draw inspiration in that way, you know, everybody is different, you know, right now, we have, he's, he's there, his picture is there.
Could he get in, could he get on the hall, the wall thing? I mean, because you got them for a presentation. All right, let's move on, let's move on now, okay, okay, let's move on, all right. I would like to know, actually, again, to the police business now, the actual place that Anthony Jones and Nicholas Del Falco, where did they come from, as far, did one of, Nicholas Del Falco been on the police department for five years, and I guess, what, nine months, maybe ten months now, and Anthony Jones has been on the force for ten months, ten months total, right? All right, at the time of the incident, Anthony Jones was only on the force for seven months. All right, where would they, where did these officers come from? Was Anthony Jones maybe came out of the academy, or was he a transfer from another department? Was Nicholas Del Falco, did he come out of the academy, was he a transfer from another department?
I don't have their personnel file in front of me, so I don't want to be misquoting, but again, those are personnel issues and where they came from, I don't know if that's really for his form or not, I'd have to look into it, but I don't have the information off the top of my head anyway. They all went, they all went through the academy at one time or another, you have to go through the police academy to be a police officer, so at one time or another, they all went through the academy.
So he said, is this, did they come on as rookies, I mean, are you considered, are you still considered a rookie if you come in from some, like, if you came from a different place?
You became a rookie in, in New Brunswick.
Right.
Rookie one, first of all.
But fresh out of the academy.
I, I believe, and I don't want to be quoted on this, but I believe Officer Del Falco came from, off the rice bill list, from the group of officers that was laid off, so I believe he came from another department. Officer Jones, I believe, was a fresh hire for New Brunswick.
What town did Officer Del Falco?
I don't know.
Okay. Have any of the officers ever had any previous?
Any?
I mean, have any of the officers had any previous IA complaints?
I can't.
According to this?
I can't.
You can't discuss that?
That's what I said.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna read you a letter, because this is what my, I received, this is, it's pretty much a cookie cutter letter, I think everyone receives it when they file an internal affairs complaint, and they sent this to her just recently, she sent it to me. I went to Red Shaw School, so I, you know, I apologize in advance for my reading, I'm not.
I'm the Red Shaw's.
Okay, all right, all right. Ms. Pippin, the Internal Affairs Unit of the department has completed this investigation of your report concerning the conduct of Officer Nicholas Del Falco and Anthony Jones. This investigation and review of all information currently available to this office indicates that these officers did not violate any department policies and procedures. In case evidence from the following sources was evaluated, the MPP Internal Affairs complaint prepared for you, statement provided by you, statements of officers Del Falco and Jones, video provided from the MVR, and investigation conducted by the LT Lieutenant Williams O's III. Now, this letter, I can, I can reach out to a million residents who have this same cookie cutter letter. Now, the problem I have, this is important, language is important, this is a teachable word right here. The investigation and of review of all information currently available to this indicates that these officers did not violate any department policies and procedures. It's, they didn't, they said it didn't violate any department policies and procedures, but it never stated that the officer didn't disrespect them. So now, being that they got the video, they got the audio, we can now find out if she was in fact talked to in a disrespectful manner, and if she was, then that means that the department policies and procedures, okay, a police officer talking to a seventy-year-old woman in a disrespectful manner, this is something we can learn from, I'm glad they sent her this letter, because they have audio footage, and if, if we all agree that she was talked to in a harsh manner, then that means that the New Brunswick Police Department, the, the Brunswick Police Department is part of that conspiracy, that means they allow, they enable officers to talk to her in a disrespectful manner, which is scary, which is scary because you got an officer who has already been on the force for almost six years, and he's disrespecting a black seventy-year-old woman in front of an officer who's only been on the force for seven months. Your mother's white, right?
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, I got a question as too.
No, no.
But do you get, you get what's wrong with this?
Yes.
So the, the department may, this may be policy and procedure, because listen, she could possibly be making this all up, she could possibly be making this entire thing up, but we have audio, and we have this letter, and if those officers, which the captain was the commander, the file, the Internal Affairs complaint was filed on September twenty-fourth, the council meeting was, let me see, October, October fifth, he comes in with his clipboard, he's the commander of Internal Affairs, and he didn't even know the officers' names who are under the investigation, so how credible could this investigation be if the commander didn't even know their names a week later?
I can't, two, two bars, to answer your last question, we're a hundred and fifty officer department, I can't be expected to know every move that every person makes, just put during your twenty questions here at the council meeting, I'm not a statistician, I have, you know, access to all the files in the office, you ask me a question, I'm not done talking, it's not gonna throw me, I don't think it throws you. If he's gonna make faces, I mean, he doesn't need.
He don't want to talk because I've got him, he said there's a hundred and fifty officers, right? How many officers are under, in, uh, Internal Affairs investigation? If there's that many, I, I respect if there's that many that when you can't remember their names, I get that, but if there's only, how many officers are under Internal Affairs investigation that the commander don't even know their names? Is, is it that many?
Yes.
They're all hundred and fifty officers that are not under investigation, but I'm not just the commander of Internal Affairs, I'm also the commander of Detective Bureau and Public Information, I have a lot of things on my claim, again, I'm not gonna miss, be misquoted at a meeting for your twenty questions without me doing the research first.
And we, all right.
Wait, real quick, so is he admitting that he's over one?
No, we.
No, I'm not overwhelmed, but I'm getting.
Let's filter, all right, let's, let's relook back, how we filter information, sometimes we hear different things at different times, and I'm not saying you're not, I'm not, I'm just giving you, I'm just giving, another teachable one, we'll do that, okay? How we filter information, when we say disrespectful manner, sometimes, I don't know how, like, I can filter information differently if somebody says something to me during the day, and it's hard to really determine, you could, you could put that in front of people, and it's hard to determine what we say is disrespectful, unless somebody's, you know, right there, you know, please do this, and you cuss them out, but how we, how we address somebody in a certain manner, sometimes it's gotta be, you know, say, that's, it's a, it's like a judgment call, and I'm not saying who's right or who's wrong, I'm just saying, how do we filter that information, you know, how do we filter that, you know, how do we filter it, and how do we listen to that information? That's all.
That's, that's a possibility, and, and there's a possibility that these officers are sent out to act in a disrespectful demeanor, I'm, listen, I, I'll explain, I'm doing, I'm doing research on it, listen.
I'm gonna extend to you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna extend to you another minute.
You could chop me off in a minute.
I just gave, I'm just.
Appreciate it, I thank you, thank you. My, my thing is, and I'm a, a, a large advocate of people being pressured to create revenue for municipalities, that's a big thing with me, and officers' demeanors, it's a numbers game, when your politics, your police department, you're in corruption, and your vice president, it's a numbers game, you know, with these demeanors, you pack courthouses, police officers give tickets, their goal is to be angry and give tickets, and then send you to traffic court so they can create revenue for the city. When you write a ticket, depending on what ticket it is, the city gets half of the revenue, and the county gets the other half, and if it's a certain ticket, the money goes straight to the state, so it's a big business, so they're not gonna reprimand an officer regardless of what, if he, they may, he's got a better chance of getting reprimanded for not being a ticket holder than he is for disrespecting a lifelong resident. Now, my, she, you know, she, like I said, she has a bad hair, and she gave me this information, and she wanted to come in today, the reason she couldn't make it today is because she's volunteering her service of taking a woman who's coming up on hard times, is not gonna handle any food for the holidays, she's taking her to two different food banks, this is the type of person that is, and I don't think she would make up a lie and say an officer didn't come out, but we can, we can listen to it, let's listen to it and find out what exactly did happen, what's the officer ruled on now, and if we come to that conclusion, we got a bigger can of worms that opened, because now we know if he was disrespectful, it may not have been, and it may have been a difference of opinion, but if he was, and nine people out of ten people feel like this man was disrespectful, and he didn't need to talk to that seventy-year-old lady like that, then we now know that this is the pop, department, Brunswick Department policies and procedures, because we asked a lot of trained officers, look to the same audio, listen to this, because we had a lot of trained officers, listen to the same audio that regular people will listen to, and hopefully they come up with the same conclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take that under the badge. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to the council? Seen done? Motion.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi.
Aye.